I will call us to order, seeing how we do have a quorum, as Commissioner Cottle makes his way up.
Would you like to say the prayer? Would you like to say the prayer?
Sure.
So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this evening, December the 9th, hours 5:34. And we will move right on and ask that we be led in a moment of prayer with Commissioner Kevin Cottle.
Thank you. Father of all, again, we thank you for allowing us to gather here in freedom to discuss the business of the city. We would ask that you be with those who are starting new chapters in their lives. We lift them up to you for guidance and grace. We ask that you be with those who are in harm's way or maybe grieving during this holiday season. And we hope tonight we conduct ourselves in a way that's pleasing to you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask Mr. Brumfield and Mr. Butler to come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah. Where's Brumfield? There he is. There he is. Come on up here, gentlemen.
Bring a few up here, my brother. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which was founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We know you're not going far. Commissioner, you have the agenda, and I assume it meets with your approval. Unless they hear otherwise, seeing none, move right on into here of the public. This is the public's opportunity to have three minutes at the microphone to address any topic that is on tonight's agenda. Later on, there'll be an opportunity to do the same on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Ms. McMahon, good evening.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. I am Valerie McMahon. I'm the chairperson of the Heart of Danville. And I wanted to come and, first of all, thank the city. So, when I was here last time addressing this group, I let you all know that I counted 20 lights out on Main Street. And I didn't personally do the count, but I understand that there are only three lights out now. So, that's a great improvement, so thank you for that. And thank you also, Ron, for agreeing to keep the tree lights on through the end of January. I think that will be a great addition to our lighting downtown. But, of course, there's still work to be done. Saturday night, a lot of us in this room were enjoying the tree lighting and enjoying the Christmas parade. I was at Bluegrass and Buttercream with my daughter and her friend, and I ran into one of my friends that I played tennis with in the summer. And I said hello, and then I noticed she had an ice pack in her hand. Her husband had tripped over the sidewalk in front of Bluegrass and Buttercream and had completely bloodied up his face. So, so much so that another bystander had called 911 because there was so much blood. And she mentioned to me that part of the reason he had fallen was the darkness. So, he's okay. I called him the next day, and he's okay. But it just is another example that while we need to also be very worried about our pedestrians crossing the street, we also need to be worried about our pedestrians walking down the street. She also mentioned just one last thing, that it was their first Christmas parade, and they would never forget it. So, Heart of Danville wants to have memorable Christmas parades, but not for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into item one, and that is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, November 25th, 26th, and December the 5th.
I have a motion.
Thank you, sir.
To approve those three meetings as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion? Seeing none, you want a minute, J.H.?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, and say aye.
Aye.
If it was like sign, motion carries.
That's pretty intimidating, looking back there. Got me worried a little bit.
Did you hear the vibration when you sounded like?
Brumfield front and center, G.R.M. front and center. Chief?
Come roast, I mean.
Provided you plenty of materials.
All right. We all have, yeah, we all have history with Tim. He, a little brief history, he came on as part-time many years ago. I lost track, but I did find out, I remember that he'd started in November of 99. So, we've got, we've had him for over 20 years. He's served many positions from firefighter, lieutenant, and deputy chief, and has served the community well. I'm sorry for him to leave, but I understand that life goes on, and you have to go on too, and take steps to do best for yourself and enjoy life. But I had a little thing for him. Well, we did altogether, but it's a certificate of appreciation for 20 years of service that Tim Brumfield has served the City of Danville with honor and dedication. Signed this day of 2019. Now, like always in the fire department, I'm not the only one that wants to talk about him. And I told him I wouldn't say anything too rough, so I'm passing the torch. Yep?
Of course, we've got his helmet. He's definitely earned that. Well, I wanted to start off by reciting something that firefighters all know, and it's something that might help enlighten people as to what Chief Brumfield's all about. And this is the firefighter's prayer. When I am called to duty, God wherever flames may rage, give me strength to save a life, whatever be its age. Help me to embrace a little child before it's too late, or save an older person from the horror of that fate. Enable me to be alert, to hear the weakest shout, and quickly and efficiently to put the fire out. I want to feel my calling, and to give the best in me, to guard my neighbor and to protect his property. And if according to your will, I have to lose my life, bless with your protecting hand, my loving children and my wife. Reason I bring that up is that Tim was called to this profession. He came by this naturally, of course. For those of you who might not know, there's generations of Brumfields that have impacted the fire service in this state. They've dedicated themselves to serve others. And they're known all over this state, and believe it or not, it's mostly good. Of course, this is in his blood. Tim's given his life to service and has made a huge impact, not only on this department, but throughout the state. Tim spent a lot of his time training the next generation of firefighters. Some of them you'll see here tonight, and I'm one of them. But some can be found manning fire trucks all over this state, from Piper to Paducah. He's been, he's made an impact everywhere. Tim's dedication to this service is unmatched, and it surely will be missed. You know, I came up saying, "In my former life, once Marine, always Marine." The same goes for firefighters. No matter where you go, from now until the day you die, you'll be part of this brotherhood. Thank you, Chief.
I'm just going to go ahead and cross on over right now. He's always asked me to come over to be the fireman over there with him, but I've always asked him to come over and be a policeman with us. I started a little bit before Tim did, and we kind of came up the ranks together and became assistant chiefs roughly at the same time. And had many conversations, was on many and many of things together, and I always considered him a partner. We talked a lot at times about our departments, about our people, and we share a lot of common goals and thoughts about service. And it's always refreshing to sit down with somebody and that cares about somebody else. I told him I'd make it quick and painless tonight.
We can neither.
Yeah. I've been known to lie to the fire department. But, you know, I've just got a lot of respect for Tim. He's a true leader, because he's all about servant leadership, and that's what true leadership's about. You know, it's about taking care of the people that you're in charge of and that work with you, and that's what Tim Brumfield is all about. I think that's why you have so many firemen here. And he is so well-known all over the state, is because when he goes and does a job, or when he goes and teaches, or just goes anywhere and impacts people, it's about making people better. And that's what I've always liked about Tim Brumfield. I will definitely miss him in our conversations. He's always been somebody that I could count on and could call and ask things about just leadership and just about life in general at times. And it's truly been an honor to work with you, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
And as is customary, sharpen up and conserve your mustache.
Usually, they won't let me have sharp things.
Amazing thing to me about this gentleman is he kind of embodies the classic firefighter. He's cheerful, he's quick-witted, he's got that Hannibal mustache. You can't quite tell underneath that, except when his cheeks go that way. You don't know whether he's frowning, what's going on. But that look right there is what we're all going to miss. And you need to come by as often as you can stand.
Or they can stand me.
That service is yours.
Thank you.
Thank everyone for the kind words. I was going to say, that sounded almost like a eulogy, and just named some pawpaws there.
Say it while you're here.
In lieu of flowers, send a message to the Tim Brumfield retirement fund. No, but thank you, and thank you to the commission, both present and past. It's been, it's been a privilege to work here, and, you know, this is all I've ever wanted to do since I was a kid, and I was able to come here and do it. And I used to come over here as a kid with my dad, and we'd stop in at the firehouse, and he knew some folks back then, and I always thought it was a neat place then. And to be able to come and work a career here, it's been, it's been a privilege, and I've been blessed to be able to do that. So, thank you all, like I said, both present and past administrations. I want to thank everyone that works with me, and the firefighters, and, I mean, that's what's the, that's where the success is. If you don't have them, nobody else is, nobody else is as important as that. And I appreciate everything they've done, and, you know, we give kids a hard time nowadays to hear, "Oh, these young kids, these young kids." But let me tell you, we've got some such bright, smart kids here that's come into the fire service. I don't know, I see Blake there. I may, I may take part of that back. No, but we do, and in this, in this profession, we see some of the best come through here. And it's, it's really exciting to, hopefully, I get to see for many years, you know, where they take and lead the departments to, and keep building on that. I also want to thank my family for being here, my wife, daughters, two of the four grandkids of mine are here, and my dad, my mom, and my brother are back here also. And in 1946, I think, is when my grandfather, he started this rodeo that we've been in. And so, my dad, he grew up at the firehouse, and, of course, my brother and I at the firehouse. And even as little kids, we used to race each other to see who could get dressed the fastest and stuff, and get ready for fires. But I'm just, I want to thank you all, because I've been so blessed to be in this family where my dad would take me to the firehouse, you know, whether he wanted to or not, I was going to go most of the time somehow or another. But I've just been blessed to be born in a family and have a family like that. And my dad, he's retired fire chief, and my brother, he just retired in 2014 from Nicholas Phil Fire, and I've got some grandkids here. Maybe they'll pick up on it. I don't know, but, but I just, I just really, again, I'm just so blessed to have a family that's, that's, like I said, took me around as a kid, and let me do that, and it's led to where I am today. But thank you all. Hey, Tim.
There you go. There you go. There you go.
Is it true that you know so much about fire because you were there when it was discovered? Or is that just a rumor?
Yes.
He's thinking. He's thinking.
He's trying to think. I'm in a public forum. You can tell me later.
Thank you.
You ready for the next one?
Yep.
Mr. Sam Butler.
Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners, tonight we also have to say goodbye to another long outstanding city employee, Sam Butler. We all started back in 1995 together. I think the city heard about 10 or 11 of us back in those days, and Sam's the next to last that's still here. Man, 24 years with the City of Danville. He's got a couple of years in Junction and Mount Vernon and Livingston, so somewhere around, what, 27 total? Yeah. You know, as Tim said, you know, just today, I was just thinking about that poem, "The Dash," and, you know, a lot of times it refers, you hear it at a funeral and everything, but, you know, what does those 24 years encapsulate? And it's, you just can't put into words everything that Sam has done for the city in 24 years. And I'll just touch on a few. Started out as a patrolman. He's been a canine handler. He's been a patrol sergeant, administrative sergeant. He programs radios. He installs light bars, cameras, radars, radios into the cruisers. The video cameras are software system. He takes care of uniforms, firearms. He's a firearms instructor. He's in armor. He takes care of our, he's an administrator for our court net, K-Y-O-P-S, and E-Warrant Systems. He's been our fleet manager for, how long now? Five years? To say that Sam has just about done it all is really kind of cutting it short. He's always on call. If there's something wrong, the guy's calling. Ain't no telling how late at night he gets on the phone and takes care of it. When we're short on supervisors, on third shift, usually we lean on Sam to come in and take care of that, at short notice sometimes. It's not just those technical things that he does, it's the memories that we're going to miss. The stories, the car chases, the searches, all those little things. Sam, it's going to be tough to see you go. 24 years, we started together, we've been on this ride. I know you'll find something to do, because of all the things that you do do. I've enjoyed these 24 years. If the governor hadn't messed things up, we probably could have rolled it out a little bit longer. But it's been an honor and a privilege. We had our PD celebration last week, but tonight, in honor of your 24 years with the city, I'd like to present you with a gift. Thank you for your service.
I thought I'd outlast you. But circumstances have dictated that I'm going to have to say goodbye to the city and thank the city for giving me the opportunity some 24 years ago. I've enjoyed my time. I'll miss the people, but it's time to, I guess, move on to the next chapter. And right here, I'll still be around. I'll be chief.
That's right.
Needs anything, give me a call. Whatever I can do, I'll help.
We look forward to that.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner, I'd like to ask that we move item number seven, suggestions for downtown lighting, up to the number four spot, so we can do it next. Lori Thompson-Finkie is here. She's a member of the Danville Board of Education, and they have a meeting scheduled for tonight as well, so it'd be nice to get her up to make a presentation.
That work for me is okay with you all?
It's okay.
Sure. Lori, come on up. You'd rather go to the Board of Education meeting and stay here?
The mayor thought I was coming over to ask him how many times Mr. Butler had arrested the two of us together, but it was about something else.
Mary Robin, do you want to?
Sure. My name is Mary Robin Spudamore. I'm involved with Cupid, the Citizens United for Pedestrian Safety in downtown Danville. Three major ways we're looking at to improve pedestrian safety, I think you'll agree, institute traffic calming measures. That's with, as you know, a huge issue with DOT. Number two, a police presence on Main Street. Three, institute better lighting. So, let's see, we walked between Second and Main, numbering each light, just so we could refer to that light's issues. I wonder how to go to the next one. Anyway, at this point, yeah, I'll let Lori talk about the issues, as Lori is a lighting professional, a Danville citizen, but works as an architectural lighting designer for clients across the country. She has a master's degree from Parsons School of Design in architectural lighting, and she's sort of analyzed the situation and come up with some recommendations.
Hello, everyone. I am Lori Thompson-Finkie, born, native Danvillian, who, as Mary Robin said, went to school in New York to get a master's in architectural lighting, which is a field not many people go into, but in this room, you have four layers of lighting that someone designed. And so, I'm not a lighting salesperson. I don't get a cut. My job is actually to go and evaluate different manufacturers and come to the job with the best solution. So, I'm not getting a kickback for this, I'm not getting paid for this. I just came and said, "This is something I can help our city with." And in light of all the things that have been happening in town, I saw Mary Robin's group and got passionate about it and thought, "What can I do to help?" So, here I am to give my report. Mary Robin, Nick Lacy, and I walked around downtown, and mainly, we're focusing on between Second and Fourth, because on the police station, fire station side, new lights have been implemented, and on the other side, on Burke's Bakery, they've been implemented. There's a nice, beautiful street light with optics and pedestrian level and above, but mainly between Second and Fourth, you can see there's some, two layers of lighting. There's one at the pedestrian level, which we'll show you a picture of later, and then there's the street lights. And I believe, according to my friend who's helped Danville get these lights, it's been about 15 years since these were put in. And so, a lot has changed in 15 years, so we're going to look at some different options. But as you can see, a lot of problems were happened, and things happen over time, and I'm not here to point fingers or anything, but I'm just saying there were some lenses missing, there were some lights out, as they mentioned earlier, there were three lights out, and we'll see what happens when that, you see these things. Okay, these are the pedestrian level lights. So, these are the ones meant to kind of light the person as they're walking along the streets. You can see that these fixtures, first, are filthy. They're full of bugs, and I imagine, and I don't know for sure, I asked the lighting person, salesperson who sold you these, if they originally had optics. And he said he thought they did, but probably it was hard to relamp them, or something came along, and someone ripped the optics out of the bottom of it, or the top. So, right now, these are basically a glass box around a light bulb, and they're not consistently illuminated, and that happens over time. But what's in there right now is a, what's equivalent to a 60-watt light bulb in each of these, and that's all. So, you're not going to get a lot of light from a 60-watt light bulb. I mean, imagine in our houses if we're trying to do anything by one light bulb, you know, every 15 or 20 feet. So, while they're pretty, they don't do a lot. These are our street lights that are up, hanging over the streets, and these are a little bit unusual. Danville must have gone for a more custom design, so these are going to be a harder fix, and we're not going to focus as much on these. But I wanted to point out that this is not the original lamping. These are originally high-pressure sodium, which gives off those orange lights you see, and those are not as energy efficient. So, rightfully so, the city, or whomever, I'm not sure who does, who's responsible for this, went and put an LED luminaire in there. And I'm not saying that's the wrong one, I'd have to get up and invest, but it's a very glare bulb, and they didn't put the lens back on. So, the lens that spreads the light is no longer on there, and this So, the lens that spreads the light is no longer on there, and this one's actually open to the elements. And again, without doing more investigation, I can't tell you whether that's wrong or right, but it's not putting much illuminance. And then, it seems like Danville has added lights haphazardly around town, like this light is on the corner by, yeah, by Farmer's Bank, Chase Bank. And it's just lighting one area really brightly, and you'll see later where that comes into play. I mean, it's just getting one side of the street, whereas, you'll see, we need even illuminance across, because if your eye is really bright at one spot, your eye goes to that, we'll see that later. And this light's been added, but it's been added right above the streetlight. So, what are we lighting? We are lighting that pole. So, again, this is the light that's up in a different part, we are lighting our beautiful banners, we're blocking our light with the banners, more so I say, and this light is full of bugs. So, over time, that happens, you know, it's an easy fix, maybe when we're putting up our Christmas lights and have the cherry pickers, we can go and clean those out. So, and again, this is another picture of the light that's lighting the streetlights going across. And you can see what they call in here, the term for it is a corn cob light, it's a row of LEDs going around, but there's not many optics to push it down, so, but even when it's pushing down, you're really lighting the top of that pole. So, you just kind of have to think where the light's going. Now, in this picture, it's hard to see a little bit in this room, but there are two pedestrians on this, walking in here, but you can't see them at all. And they're over here, kind of towards the tall streetlight, and when our businesses are dark at night, as they are, you know, at this time of year, much of Main Street, you really can't see anyone walking. And that's a hazard, especially because our streets have the bricks, and as she was saying earlier, people trip. So, again, you've got two levels of light, but we're really not seeing anything besides the light. And I believe in the tall one, you have that LED bulb, which I don't think is the right bulb, because you're really seeing it, and if you're looking at the ground beneath it, it's not very well illuminated, you really need to see what it's illuminating. So, again, this is a beautiful picture, and you think, oh, this is great, but you couldn't see a person walking. As you see, the sidewalks are not illuminated at all. If someone were to walk down the street, which I wish we could've redone, you probably couldn't see their face, or what they're doing, or anything. So, again, this is a problem, and it just happens over time, but we can make it better. And this is on the corner by Chase Bank, looking one way, where you see the new street lighting, which I hear is in our five, 10-year plan, which I think is great, it would look great. But you can see how that part of the street is lit very well, going that way, but on going this way, to the left and right, it's really dim and dark. And then, again, this is looking the other way, and this, it's just a very dark picture. And it's interesting, I would also urge our local businesses to look at lighting their buildings, because the brightest and most beautiful building is our parking garage, which actually has lighting on it. So, you can see, you need vertical luminance as well, but that's lighter. This is another area where the war memorial has been lit by floodlights, but they're not focused on the war memorial, and that honestly makes the rest of the street seem darker, because it's so bright there, that it's, you're dark in contrast, your eye goes to that, and doesn't see the person walking beside there. So, we've been doing some studies, and I've just pulled, I wanted to give you some images, because, again, I see light, and I've studied light, but it's hard to explain why you need optics and things to people. So, I found this study done by the U.S. Department of Energy, where they went to, I think it was Chautauqua, New York, and Stanford University, and did a study, and this was in 2013, so a lot has happened since then, too. But they brought up some importance that, some of the things that we need to be looking for is the vertical illuminance, the university, I mean, the uniformity, and then, some other things, and I've emailed to Mr. Atkins a copy of this, so you can read the whole report, it's like 30 pages, but it gives lots of good images. But we need to have pedestrian-friendly lighting, so that we are safe from tripping and falling, we are safe from being hit by bicycles and skateboarders and things on, which I don't think you'd get on the sidewalks, but, and then, security, and then, other things. But this is to show you why we can't just go and do what I call a Band-Aid fix, we can't just put brighter lighting in there. A new brighter bulb is not gonna fix our problem. So, in this first picture, they just put a glary bulb in this, and when your eye sees that at night, your eye goes to that. And in the second picture, someone's doing a simple thing and saying, okay, if you didn't see that bulb first, and you had something optically doing it, you can actually see the person walking through the fence there. And so, but that is just how your eye adapts to light. And so, again, another image is, by picking the right fixture, the first one is the wrong one, you can't see anything, the second one, you've got a much more directed, optically advanced fixture, and it's a nice, even illuminance. So, this is, again, a study they did on Stanford's campus, and these are some of the similar fixtures that I'm trying to propose tonight, that would be an easy fix for our pedestrian lights, is a light, a pole topper, and this one on the bottom right has open sides, so for maintenance-wise, cleaning the glass wouldn't be a problem, it's an LED fixture, it would last five years at least, and it would give nice, even illuminance. There's zillions of choices of fixtures, and I just picked this one on the right. The one on the left has the glass, and I don't want to add to our maintenance issues. So, the one on the right is just a GE Evolve, it just came out last year, so it's got gray optics, and you can get it in a range of color temperatures, so I would recommend, and you can read this study, they did a whole survey of people seeing whether they warm light or cold light, I would pick a warm light to keep our historic downtown. But this fixture, we could mount on top of our existing poles, we have a square pole, and adapt it to a round adapter for $400 each. So, it's not a great, it's an LED, it's about 36 watts, maybe, maybe a little bit more. And again, it's UL-listed, it's got wet location, it is, again, it has the varying color temperatures, and it gives anywhere between 2,800 and, I believe, 5,400 lumens. And again, lumens is the light output of the light bulb, we were getting 800 lumens out of our 60-watt light bulbs. So, this would immediately give you three or four times more light. But what's beautiful about this is that the light would come out at the top, so you would see people's faces, and you would see what's going on. And I can get a sample of this in for us to fire up and try, and it's, early as two or three weeks. So, again, here's the cost of the fixture, you know, it's not a humongous cost, but I think for, to do all fixtures, it would be about $9,500 for the city. And there's other things to look at, like in our streetlights up above, should we want to investigate going to that, this is one possible solution. If you imagine, that's the light bulb on the right, all that light is directed down, so that's something we could get and try and mock up and see. And then, we could always look at crosswalk lighting. These are some things people have used in different cities, where that, underneath the sign, the lights would illuminate day or night, if someone's walking across, and it's solar-powered. Again, there's solutions out there, should we choose to do it. Another one is, in this town, they use these light paths going across, and they're not very glary, and, you know, again, in a dark sidewalk, that might give a good thing. So, a quick summary is, rather than repair our existing lighting, which I think is very outdated, we should invest in new technology with the new post toppers, order a sample of it, keep the holiday lights up until the pedestrian lights are approved, look into replacement street lamps for the tall streetlights, and advocate for the light path crosswalk fixture, or different crosswalk options. And one thing that we need to do most, is to create a maintenance schedule, because that's how a lot of these things happened, is one lights out, somebody calls to complain. Really, in the world of lighting, in a city like this, we need to do group relamping, like everybody, even though one light fails, you need to replace them all, because they were all bought at the same time, and eventually, they're gonna fail. And it's cheaper to get that maintenance thing out there once, than it is to do it every once in a while. And then, the bulb you buy will match everyone, rather than five different kinds. So, and then, we need to keep an open mind about supplemental lighting down on the roads, there's a lot of technology out there, and then, consult with a lighting professional, new streetscape. But, again, this is just something I've been passionate about, and I don't think it's an expensive solution for the short term. So, if you all have any questions for me, or any concerns, and again, I'm not sure exactly if it's the city that does the lighting on Main Street between Second and Fourth, or the state, because it's a state road, but again, these are just some findings that we came up with.
Any questions for Ms. Finkie? Thank you, Lori.
All right.
No, I didn't mean to send you, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate your presentation, I'm glad you ladies are here, and it's nice to know that we have this professional as an him in town. Certainly, I think our engineers have been approached with this before, and maybe they'll consult with you on this at some point. We did apply again, well, actually, we have downtown master study going on, so I think these things will flow together, but I think the point you two ladies are making is, until that study's complete, what are we gonna do? We can do some things kind of inexpensively, and I would hope that staff over here would approach us with that, so I appreciate you ladies being here.
Oh, thank you.
And I'm gonna encourage, as I have before, email, write a letter, whatever, to Representative Daniel Elliott.
Okay.
And Senator Rick Gerdler, because we need to have a conversation with the new Secretary of Transportation, Jim Gray. And the protocol of that is, they're the guys to get us that appointment.
Right.
Once we get in the door, I feel we can have a productive conversation about the entire situation.
Right. But is the area on Second and Fourth the city's, or who is, okay, that's the city's jurisdiction, like if we were to, I mean, who maintains those, is it this, the?
The streetlights are ours, aren't they, Earl?
Okay, all right. I just, I wasn't sure, because I'd heard varying things, that they're KU streetlights, they're our streetlights. And again, these would also be great in Constitution Square, where, again, it's a lot of milky fixtures going around. And our Whizzer Park looks great, I tried to find a, I found a picture, and I was, I couldn't get it uploaded in time, from the holiday parade, where Whizzer Park looks really nice with the nice new lights, but then you, right on Main Street, is dark right beside it. And that's just sad, because we're trying to encourage people to come, and this time of year, it'd be, illuminance makes people...
Let me ask a point of clarification, Earl, just so we all are on the same page. The large overhead lights on Main Street, are those KUs, are they ours?
Those belong to the city, the pedestrian lights on Main Street belong to the city.
Okay.
And we do have a schedule for maintenance on those, we work on those twice a year, but I'd love to sit down and talk to you about your ideas, and if there's something we can do. One of the biggest obstacles we have is the, how limited the electrical system is that supports those light fixtures, and that's really our biggest obstacle.
Right.
With trying to make improvements, but certainly, having an opportunity to pick your brain about any fixture changes would be appreciative, but the biggest change we can have is to upgrade the electrical system, which allows us to upgrade the lighting to what you see in front of City Hall now.
Right.
And also, in the Third Street section that you were looking at, that's new.
Yeah.
That was put in with the streetscape system. So, the lights there, along Main Street, I'm wanting to say was a 1980s era.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, earlier, you said like 15 years, those are much older than that. And that electrical system, I'm not really sure how all of it was installed, some of it's really substandard, and in terms of its robustness, really, I can't think of a better word than that, but it's just not very...
Well, the good thing is that, you know, these newer technologies require less wattage. So, it's not like we're trying to power something that's even more, it's actually less, sometimes it's too little power for some of these old fixtures, you know, to do, but, I mean, as far as getting a post topper or something like that, that should be something that's easy to do, because it's comparable wattage, or something like that.
Correct.
But I don't...
So, yeah, we'll reach out to you and pick your brain.
So, we've applied, and been turned down twice for our streetscape application, which would cover Second to Fourth. Kind of amazing to me that the centerpiece of the whole town, Second to Fourth, has not been done, but if we could get that done, then you can have new sidewalks with new electrical underground, with bump outs, and solve a multitude of these situations. It still leaves us with working with Department of Transportation on signaling.
Right.
And flow, and all those kinds of things, but...
But if that's gonna take five years, I totally understand, this is something we can do. Or two, you know, this is something we could do in the meantime, that I think, you know, could, and these post toppers are somewhat generic, that if the city does upgrade later, they could probably be moved to another location and reused, I mean, it wouldn't be wasted funds.
Go ahead, Earl.
No, I was gonna say, that's one of the main points I appreciate about what you're doing, is that it's more than a Band-Aid, but it's not the whole digging up everything, so I hope that you will get with Earl, and maybe we can get something started.
Yeah, at least mock it up and make sure, you know, see how it works, and whether, and I encourage you, Mr. Atkins, I'll get you to forward then the emails, that study is really extensive, like on how they had different groups, you know, review the colors and see what they thought, and, you know, the optics, and, I mean, it's a beautiful thing, too, but, thank you all.
Did you say you had already ordered a sample?
Yeah, well, I can get one, I just, you know, I don't want to do it if it's not gonna be, you know, it wouldn't be hard to do. It's already ready, but it could ship out on, I think, the 26th was the first day.
Let us look at the post and see if it's mountable and things like that, there's a little bit, there's several elements to, see if the fit up is correct.
Yeah, on the invoice there, and I can give you my contact person, but on that price sheet, there's an adapter for the post, so it's to take it from the square to the circle, it should work, or we could figure it out.
What's the step in the right direction?
Yeah, well, thank you all for letting me...
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'm off to my other meeting.
Thank you.
Tell the superintendent we give you a tardy slip.
Proclamation for Danville Arbor Day, December the 11th, 2019, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton of Nebraska City proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas, the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in the United States with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, the Arbor Day Foundation has a mission, quote, "to inspire people to plant, nurture, and celebrate trees," close quote. And Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world, and whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and wildfire. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas, trees in our city increase our property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and beautify our community, and whereas, the city of Danville will celebrate Danville Arbor Day by planting a tree in our community on December the 11th, 2019, to further enhance the quality of life and beauty in our community. Now, therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the Board of Commissioners of the city of Danville on this ninth day of December, do hereby recognize Wednesday, December the 11th, 2019, as Arbor Day, and further urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant and care for trees to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Amen.
Thank you for what you do, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I can tell you that we're in the midst of this year's planting. Janet, how far along are we? Is she here yet?
Halfway.
Halfway. Yeah, so you'll see that more fruits of them come spring.
Appreciate what you do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll move to accept that proclamation.
Second.
Thank you, sirs. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign, motion carries. Item five, you have an announcement from the... Item five, you have an announcement from the arts community. Me, me.
Thank you for having us. This is Esther Rogario, who is the chairman of our board, and Kathy Milby, who is the treasurer of our board, and they're here to back me up.
All right.
About 20 years ago, in 1998, the city commission sought to, or several members of the city commission sought to it, to say that Danville needed to have a focus on the arts. And as one thing led to another, the Arts Commission was established. So, we do various things, as you know, but beginning in 2004, we started naming an Arts Citizen of the Year, a person or persons who have contributed, not just for the year, really, but throughout their lives, to improving the arts and arts availability in our community. And the recipients have varied, as our community varies. Our very first recipient was Wilma Brown in 2004. So we have a distinguished person in our midst. Other recipients have been Barbara Lockhart, Stuart Powell, Michael Hughes. Last year, it was Vince DiMartito. So I am here tonight to announce, and I've kept it a secret, I shouldn't even tell anybody, except the board, they know, they voted, our Arts Citizens of the Year for 2019 are Heather Henson and Robbie Henson. And they are being designated as individuals, as well as what they have done with Pioneer Playhouse. Their mother was designated many years ago as well, for keeping that alive and going. So, in the 70th year of the Playhouse, we're celebrating that, as well as what Robbie and Heather do in their varied careers.
Wow.
Thank you very much. So, the city commission has graciously also allowed us to make the presentation at the first January meeting. So, we'll be back.
See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is the recommendation of the Danville Boyle County Commission and its visitors' bureau to recommend that Hollywood be appointed to the Tourism Commission as a representative of the hotel, motel, and bed and breakfast industry. I'll entertain them, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move for the approval of Hollywood to the Tourism Commission as a representative of the hotel and motel industry.
Second?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Discussion?
Jennifer Holly's not here, I guess, to meet her. Okay. Yeah.
Holiday season, and she.
Yeah, we'll just pass on, welcome, don't you know. She's from Minnesota, right?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eight is the codes enforcement report. Ms. Lester?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see, you have the report before you. For the month of November, we had a total of 34 inspections and activities going on. We issued 19 business licenses. We placed one lien and recovered eight. I like that ratio a little bit better. We issued 76 parking citations and issued one citation for $100. Also note that we added a condemned property to the list, 213 Bothman Avenue, due to a structure fire on November 16th. So there's a lot of damage to the interior, and the windows were busted out, and there's no water and sewer or anything like that there. Also, I was invited to go to the State Alcohol Beverage Control last week and got to review their new online software they're going to. All the state applications will be going to online applications at a date in the future. They haven't given us a drop dead date there, but that'll be something new. So it'll be interesting to see how that works. We're excited to give that a try. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Lester?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thorough report again.
Pardon me?
I said, thanks for a very thorough report.
Yes, sir. Item nine is Resolution Number 2019-12-09-01. This is cancellation of the second commission meeting. Mr. Scott, you wanna talk about that?
Yes, sir. At our last meeting, our commission had some limited discussion about whether it would be desirable to hold a second meeting of the month, in the month of December, which traditionally, we do not hold for a variety of reasons. We do have perhaps the necessity or desire to hold a special meeting later this week for another matter, and I don't know if there is really a good reason to hold the meeting on 23rd of December or not. Perhaps the commission might decide to do so, but typically, we have not done so, and I cannot think of really a compelling reason to do it on the 23rd, given our tradition.
So our Robert Trues voters would say we would need a motion and a second, and then discussion.
Can a motion be to reject, to not approve this resolution?
Hmm, I think we have to, no, I don't think we can do that. I think we have to make a motion on this, and then vote it up or down.
Well, I'll make a motion, a motion?
Motion, yes.
Make a motion for approval of Resolution 2019-12-09-01.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
There's a second. We are in discussion.
Now, you may speak.
Jade, you're welcome to start it, but I've already started talking.
I just called for the question. I want to vote against it myself, just simply because there are several things pending before the commission and before the city, that I would hate to think from today to January the 9th, we would not get back together to address some of the issues that need to be addressed. So I'm opposed to canceling the meeting, but I am also open to, if we get those items resolved before the 23rd, to put this back on the table for discussion at that time.
I might echo the city manager. I think we're going to have a special call meeting, if not two, on a couple of items, so that'll take away from the agenda. On the other hand, you know, we're trying to get things resolved with Parks and Rec, and so either yourself, Mr. Scott, or Mr. Dexter, you want to, any comments on where we may be, and whether we need to have a meeting prior to January 1st to discuss that?
I would say, if the need arises in regards to Parks and Recreation, I know that the county, county attorney informed me that there was gonna be a special call meeting for an in-depth discussion of the joint participation agreement, and upon receipt of either an approved document or an approved document contingent upon certain revisions, then I would certainly advocate for a prompt meeting of the Board of Commissioners to reconcile any differences that may exist with the document prior to the end of the year, for a January 1st start date.
So using the word prompt, it'd be another special call meeting, possibly?
Yes, you know, we have to give 24 hours notice for those meetings. I was just saying, if the county forwarded a document to me and said it is either approved or it is approved with these enumerated revisions, it would be my request through the city manager that a meeting, that 24 hour notice be given, and that you meet.
So we got a lot on our plate, but it sounds like most of it may be handled on special call types of meetings, and if we did go for with a regular scheduled meeting, that just ties staff to that date. And so I think that's a consideration up here that we have to think about.
Well, and it would tie us to that date, and it would tie a few staff members to that date. I guess my concern is that if we don't want to use that date, then we will find time on our schedules for these quote unquote "special call" meetings. But, you know, we've had some difficulties of getting a quorum of the five of us for some of those meetings. So that date's on the calendar, and it could stay there, and if the need goes away, we can always vote it down, open it up.
Well, there's always a possibility that we don't have a quorum on the 23rd.
Yes, that's right. At least that's, well, enough's been said. I call for the question.
Question's been called. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So there will be a meeting on the 23rd.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
Would it be the preference of the commission, then, as the additional needs arise between now and the 23rd, that they, I guess, be put in staff's table, or in the arsenal for the 23rd, or that you meet specially on them individually, as was the previous intention?
I think it depends on the timeline of what the special call meeting is called for. I think certainly, in terms of looking at a new city manager, we need to move forward so that individual can talk to their current employer and give them their notice. So, you know, if we wait two more weeks, of course, it makes a lot of sense. So I think it depends on timelines. Parks and Rec probably can wait till that meeting, possibly, I don't know. We'll see what comes back from the county, if they need quicker turnaround. That's my feeling, anyway.
Yeah, so you're not opposed to special call meetings prior to the 23rd?
No, no, I'm not, nope.
Okay, item 10. This will be the second reading of ordinance from 1942. This is in relation to the annexation on Stamford Road and the bypass. Madam Clerk, would you like to read that ordinance, please?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 1942, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky, proposing to annex unincorporated territory lying adjacent to and contiguous with the present city boundaries located on along the South Danville Bypass, US Highway 150, and Wilderness Road in the area between same, which property is owned by Evelyn S. Gonder, Walter Gonder, Jeffrey L. Kettles, Imogen Walker, Kimberly Anderson, Louis C. Brown, Eugenia Lynn Hopkins, Temple Baptist Church, Caldwell Stone Company Incorporated, and Commonwealth of Kentucky, consisting in the whole of 180.879 acres, more or less, and being more accurately described below.
Do I hear a motion for the second reading of ordinance number 1942?
I'll move for approval of ordinance number 1942.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarris?
Yes.
Item 11 is the city manager report. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Tonight, I'll be brief. I would advise that following our regular agenda here tonight, we do need a special call meeting to discuss property acquisition, as well as matters in litigation, so those two topics.
It's an executive session.
In executive session.
And I would add personnel as well, please.
Okay.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, one other matter. John Castle, our engineer, has a report on a number of projects and progress on those, and so perhaps briefly, he could report on those.
Mr. Castle, the floor is yours.
Like I did last time previously, I'll go through the order that I've had before. For third and Main Street safety concerns, we've been continuing monitoring everything going on and people's comments. We're definitely gonna be taking that into consideration. Our next meeting with the Citizens Group is on December 18th at 10:00 a.m. We've gotten some feedback from the state, too, to pass on to folks there. Streetscape, what we're looking at is folding a lot of master plan stuff and the sliding comments, everything into our future planning. So you can kind of say, we're looking at streetscape between Second and Fourth Street already. Splash pad, we're continuing trying to find some way to put concrete or stone down for the overflow and that. For our regular public works department, because we're shorthanded, we're focusing on the leaves and the tree planting and stuff, and inviting everybody to the Arbor Day activity. I think it's Wednesday at 1:30, or 1? I have to check, I'm sorry. The meeting is at 1:00 or 1:30 that afternoon for the ceremony honoring the proclamation and stuff. So regarding ice and snow equipment, it's ready. We got a full salt build ready for anything else coming up. The guys did a lot of extra work cleaning things up for the tree lighting in downtown and follow up on that. They're working on lighting down at the Second Street Bridge for the sun, but also possibly considering some lighting on the pedestrian crosswalk across there. And gentlemen, this morning, or this afternoon back here, recommended we put some reflectors on the guardrails, and we're probably gonna be doing that, too. For wayfinding, I'll cover on that some more on item 14. Major storm structure issues, really no change on that, because we're focusing on other stuff, but it's still, it's things that we keep in mind with all the other stormwater things going on. Streamland stormwater investigation, we hope to make a presentation to y'all in January, if the time allows. We're beginning to revisit the scope for renovating the public works garage, which is an old project. We got a $700,000 budget, we need to squeeze as much as we can. And the Hanson Trail is mostly done, just some monitor cleanup stuff, and we're gonna do some drainage work on the end of that, but pretty much, people can start using it.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Rock? Okay. We are in the section called "Hear the Public." This is a public's opportunity, take three minutes on any subject that we've not covered tonight, and not on tonight's agenda. Ms. Spooner, welcome back.
Thank you. I just thought while I was here, I wanted to talk about, one of the other three points is the police department. I just wanted to plant a seed and let you know, in my conversations with Tony, we suggested perhaps some police presence on Main Street, and there is no extra patrolman available to do such. And it reminded me, when Tony and I sat down in January 2016, he was explaining, you know, it's fairly difficult to work with, to cover the city with only five officers. And he showed me the map and how it's covered. And so Katie Bright and myself sat down with him a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "It's fairly difficult to cover the city with only four officers." So from, the situation has gotten worse in three years, not better. So I just hope in the new coming year, if you all are making your budget, allocating funds, so he can police strategically. And I do think there's lots of talent in Chief Gray, in the police department, but their call rate apparently is very high for a town of our size. And then the staffing is at the salary rates they are now. It's known as a great place to start, but not a great place to remain. So he was explaining, he's constantly training, because there's not many veteran officers within his staff. Anyway, so my first one was just to see if there was a patrol officer available for Main, but there's not. And then I was, became aware of sort of a more dire situation, that I think for a community that has, of our size, that has our wealth, I'd hope that we have a police force that can police strategically, and as well, a patrolman for wherever need be. And two, as we, I mean, I think about the criminal activity and the drug issues as well, they must manage. So that's my voice for the people.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing not, we'll move into commissioner comments. Mr. Atkins, if you care to, or Ms. Terry, ladies first.
I wanted to mention that the Boyle County Marching Band is marching in the inaugural parade tomorrow in Frankfurt, so that's pretty exciting for them. And I think- And I think Bobby's could probably do a story on that. So that's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for those students, so I think that's great. I have already shared that with Chief Gray. After the parade Saturday night, there was a motorist on Main Street who probably had sat in their car and watched the parade, and their battery ran down. And I saw one of the officers jump in their car and helping them. So that's some good things that I know you don't always get to hear. And the mayor and I attended a meeting on Friday, but I'll let you expand on that.
Gosh, okay.
You've slept since then.
I think one of the things that was interesting that I got out of is the state of Texas is not putting a lot of money into new jails. They are spending all of their funds directed to facilities, and as the gentleman described, it's kind of like you go and choose door number one, number two, or door number three. Door number one is if you have a mental health issue. Door number two is if you have a substance abuse issue. Door number three, something else. Because they're trying to spend money to prevent and help people from becoming that end user into the jail, into the prison, where it's a very costly proposition as we're all seeing right now. Right, Mr. Cullen?
Correct, sir.
Very expensive. So that was one interesting point. What else?
The Louisville Police Department talked about their policy changes as far as charging and enforcing possession of marijuana. They essentially...
Don't. Essentially don't.
They essentially don't. If you have a small amount, if you are caught with a small amount of marijuana, they will confiscate it as long as you are not under any sort of influence or any other charges necessary. They basically send you on your way and confiscate the marijuana to destroy. And then someone spoke about a plan for an active shooter at your city hall and place of work, and that was very interesting.
That was really interesting, yeah.
Very interesting, and something that if we don't have, we should probably look at implementing.
I'd like to also thank the police and fire department for all their work on the parade. Again, it's, Tony, I know it takes a lot of your guys coming out sometimes on a bitter cold night. Wasn't that bad this time. But thank you and to the police, the fire department for setting things up, too.
Mine's more of a question, I guess, and probably for Stephen. Let's just say that the county, the fiscal court does not sign the agreement by January 1. We will then have two agreements? We have one agreement? Which one? What are we, I think Mr. Bell would like to know kind of where he would stand at that point.
There will be a budget amendment to the city. Depending upon the county's move or decision will determine the amount of that budget amendment. But the city is proceeding with the creation of its department based on your ordinance, which is an effective repeal of the prior ordinance irrespective of your vote to abolish it. So the city is transitioning to its department January 1. Effective, the budget amendment will be affected based upon the decision of the county.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Well, it just stirs up another question, though. Currently, Parks and Rec is funded to June 30, 2020 by city and county. The county's not...
There are not payments, there are remaining payments left in that schedule, though.
Right. And they are, they still plan to make those payments kind of soon?
The city will not make payments to the joint Parks and Recreation Board effective January 1st.
Oh, wow. We decided that as a commission?
Well, you voted to create a new department, so the funds, I don't want us to walk down a road of maybe contingencies or doomsday situations that wouldn't be productive. You have voted to create a city department for the administration of what is hopefully a joint Parks and Recreation Department. That agreement has been formulated with, in a spirit of cooperation, with terms that the Parks and Recreation Director and staff believe are sufficient to garner support for this arrangement. Until the county has time to review and hopefully approve, or approve with some modest changes, then the potential situations you're referring to, I believe, would be unproductive.
Okay, that's a, oof. I was going to make some announcements. I guess now's the appropriate time, yes. Tomorrow, December 10, 2019, has been labeled as World Human Rights Day in the eight areas of equality, freedom, peace, peace, hope, dignity, rule of law, prosperity, and justice. I don't know why that crossed my mind when we talked about Parks and Rec, but anyway, it's up to you. But we had this discussion about the need for the December, the second meeting in December. I assume that the city commission is going to set a date for Ron Scott's retirement. You can't expect staff and Ron to set his own retirement celebration, so part of our discussion needs to determine when Ron Scott's last day of employment is going to be with the city, and then we set a celebration for Ron's retirement. So that's another one of those issues that I think need to be resolved before the 23rd, the second meeting in the month of December.
It's my understanding on the Parks and Rec thing that the county is getting ready to take up that subject, and I think in a perfect world, it'd be nice to have a resolution January 1. But we don't live in a perfect world, and I would much rather have a resolution that brings comfort to both governments just as soon as possible.
And I will say that my conversations with the county attorney have been precisely that, that his initial interpretation was that it was a vastly fair document, and upon further review with the court, they would finalize any necessary modifications that may or may not be needed. So I would say, due to the positive reception of the document and the spirit of cooperation in which it was developed, it should, we should allow them time to look at it, review it, either provide acceptance or modest modification if necessary, and then action upon you to finalize whatever arrangement is necessary.
Sound right?
Yes, but there is another option for the city commission, and that is that a resolution has been passed with effective date of January 1, 2020. Someone could write a resolution and change the effective date to give the, I get colleagues of the county more time to work with the proposed ordinances. That would be another possible solution for us as well.
I think all of which is premature until the county gives its feedback, and it's an ordinance. So you passed an ordinance effective January 1st, not a resolution.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to make sure we get all the dialogue out, because all these things that keep coming back to that meeting in December, or some special meetings in December to get these things resolved.
What I'm vowing is, due to the tremendous amount of work on this particular issue this calendar year, I will pledge to you that upon receipt of that document, you will have a meeting within 48 hours.
Well, you got to get the five of us together, though, right? About three of us.
Well, I'll have to get three of you together.
Three of you.
I'm saying, and due to the tremendous community, the importance to our community on this particular issue, I doubt there will be difficulty in garnering a quorum.
Can't leave town.
Anything else?
Four quick things I want to play off of you, Mayor, and the Christmas parade and decorations downtown. We also want to give kudos to Public Works. They put in a lot of work doing that, and I know you didn't intentionally not mention them, you just didn't think about it, so.
I'll accept that.
Yeah. Also, you know, we're always proud of our community, and we set the bar pretty high, but you know, I still think that we need to give kudos to the Boyle County High School football team for playing in the state championship and making history over at Center College. The men's soccer team made it to the final four in Division III, first time ever, so I think that's pretty, pretty cool. Do a real quick shout-out, and John can help me here. What's your national day for Parks and Rec this month?
Friday, National Hotchard Day.
Where will it be?
Land David Center throughout the day. And we're going to pick it up on Hotchard.
Okay, thank you.
Friday.
Is it a drive-through option?
No.
Thank you, John.
That's neat.
Anything else? Moving right along to item 12, payment of the bills. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve the December 9 bill list in the amount of $923,620.59.
Thank you. Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, discussion? Single non-chair, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Budget report, Michelle. Ms. Gosser.
Good evening. I have for you the first quarter budget report for the year 2020. As you can see, on the general fund, our revenues are below budget by 7.5%, seven percent. This is not unusual for the first quarter, as our payroll taxes usually come in a little bit higher in the last three quarters than the first quarter. Your budget operating expenditures have a positive variance of 10.19%, which leaves a $64,310 positive variance for the year. Of course, these are adjusted for things such as taxes that come in at odd times and debt service and capital in order so that we can get a true operational feel of what's going on. I want to remind you that we budgeted to spend $8.7 million of reserves this year out of our budget. Most of that was borrowed money, some of it was reserves that we had for extra capital. On municipal aid, we have not spent that money yet. We usually do to pave and list a year. As of September 30, we hadn't spent that money yet, so therefore you have the variances. Municipal aid at the Kentucky Cabinet was also late getting us the money, so we have not got that money yet, but we have been doing our transfers. We budgeted to transfer $200,000 to make up for the shortfall that we get from the state now. Stormwater fund has a negative 4.65% variance on the revenues, which is not unusual either. And expenditures has a positive variance of 13.79. That leaves a positive variance of $7,281. The garbage fund is read on schedule. It has a 0.55% variance on revenues and expenditures of positive 1.16, leaving a positive variance of $4,411. The utility fund has a small positive variance on revenues of 0.97% and also on operation expenses of 1.06, leaving a positive variance of $44,952. Your parking fund has a slight negative variance of $2,032, but it has an operational positive variance of 37.97%, leaving a positive variance of $12,893. Overall, you have a, for all your major funds, you have a negative 4.22 variance in revenues, but like I said, that is not unusual to be for the first quarter. It also tells us that we have a non-growing revenue source, that it's flat what we expected it to be this year, and we'll keep an eye on that for the next quarter as we report to you. We also have a positive variance of $564,062 in operating expenses, leaving a net of $258,201. This is slightly lower than other fiscal years, so that just says our budgets are a lot tighter this year than they have been in the past. I want to remind you all, this is a snapshot in time as we are on a modified accrual basis as required by GASB. So these numbers change every day based on bills that we get in and so forth. If anybody has any questions?
Questions for Michelle? No, ma'am, thank you. Item 14 is the wayfinding presentation discussion.
For the commission, mayor, citizens, I can make this pretty quick or talk for a long time.
Quick is good.
If you want to be re-instructed on wayfinding altogether. If I could just sum up, I really liked what John Carmen said in the Frankfurt wayfinding that I quoted in the report I gave you guys, that when people talk about a wayfinding system, they typically do so because they got lost. When the system works, they have a better experience but can't put their finger on why. They may simply recall how easy it was to get around. If the system is successful in communicating a sense of place, it will fit effortlessly into the fabric of the community. As such, it is a part of the experience, and it becomes intuitive. He also made another comment where if it's successful, people don't notice it after a while and don't realize it's helped them. So that's our goal with what we're doing on here. So without going into all the details of the individual signs and stuff that were in the House Packet, specifically for what y'all asked us to present about, we met with Lori Cagan-Moore from the Dollhouse last week about her request for additional signage. I'll start off saying our recommendation is that instead of doing the complete request that she asked for, is that we just do one sign that will not add too much to the overall cost and will get a direction for northbound traffic that she needs. That said, she does have a very good point that for people coming up from the southern area of Boyle County and traveling to the north, trying to find the Dollhouse Museum, as of right now, in the plan, there's nothing to point things in her direction. So it's understandable that she needs some help on that. The reason I only recommend the one sign instead of all the rest of them, it's in the Packet where it's primarily talking about how where she wants to put additional signs is on the outer area, the bypass area, and the general idea of wayfinding is to help people in the outer areas get to smaller general areas. So the example is always coming back to downtown Danville. There's a lot of signs on the bypass that point people to downtown Danville and Center College and the high school and other things like that. But you're pretty much getting away from specifics of individual businesses and that sort of thing. It's usually the downtown area, for example. So that said, our recommendation for just the one sign is just that a recommendation, and it's up to you guys to give us direction about what you'd like us to do. The only, the real reason we're hesitant to go so much farther, we'd love to be able to help more people, but we can only help so many people, or it gets to be a clutter of signs, or it gets to be way expensive to try to include everybody, and intersections may start looking like vermin-shaved areas. And the state has their guidelines that we can only put at the most two signs in a direction at an intersection, and each sign can only have three destinations on it. So we want to help everybody as much as we can, but because of the limitations, this is the recommendation we have. But right now, that's the presentation, and it's more for you guys to discuss as much as you want. But right now, that's the presentation, and it's more for you guys to discuss as much as you want. We'll answer your questions, and we can go from there. This is not an action request or a final decision request. It's just, as y'all would ask for, a chance to discuss it.
I told you before, I appreciate you reaching out to Lori and anybody else that was asking. This thing is pretty complex, as far as I'm concerned. A lot of people worked on it before I became a city commissioner, so this thing's been in the works a long time. And it kind of confuses me sometimes when I look at it. Can't get everybody up there. But I do remember a few things, and I think you, I ask you to elaborate on it. And maybe Earl can remember this too, and the city manager. But rather than a second sign, I think we could get permission to put a fourth destination on the original pole. Is that no longer?
They're trying to get away from that. The gentleman I talked to specifically that does the approvals was making it sound like they don't have intention to do that anymore, but we can always ask.
I think another point that was brought up from your conversation, and you did a really nice report on it, is that some of, we've done a good job of putting up markers, "Welcome to Danville." So I guess it kind of, kind of seems like a duplication. I say downtown Danville when it already says "Welcome to Danville" on a nice-looking sign. And I see a head shaking over there. So I'm open to, you know, this is not my expertise naturally, but it's something I just want to discuss for everybody's sake. So I just thought that was a good point. Welcome to Danville and downtown Danville are kind of right next to each other. So I think if something was going to leave, that could be possible in my, in my head, okay? The other thing I'd like to bring up, and I know these, my fellow commissioners are chomping at the bit to get in here and talk, but, you know, it just threw me back that if we added signs out there, it costs $10,000. That's a, that's a lot of money for a sign. Gosh darn it, I never would have guessed that. So that does put a little damper on everything.
So I suppose what I thought we were going to get was the plan of how much money we're going to spend on the basically first phase of this and where those signs are going to go. So are, is there progress with that?
Well, I guess you could say the first phase is settling how we have to do the encroachment permits. At one point, we thought we were going to have to do an encroachment permit for every sign. So that'd be 54 permits applications. And the way it worked out, the gentleman that I have to deal with at the state doesn't want to have to do any more work like that than anybody else would want to. So he suggested that we do a blanket permit, that we will fill out the form with the detailed information as far as who's sponsoring and other stuff like that. But the parts that require like the coordinates of each individual sign, we're going to give them a list and present them the PDF file that we have from John Carmen that gives them the plan of what we're wanting to do, satisfies their other requirements. He's going to be taking that and turn it over to his engineers. And he estimated four months, best-case scenario, a year worst-case scenario. It might take them that long to review the plan and finally get approvals to us. Once he gets the approvals to us, then we can come back to you guys and start talking to you. Or hopefully, if we get some indications from them, that they're going to be approving most or all of what we're asking for. We can come back to you guys and start breaking it down into the phases that Earl originally had. We do the outer loop first, and then we, and then we start working on the downtown area. So we're talking about, we've got some time to work on this, and I'm waiting to hear from the gentleman. He didn't get back to me in time for today's presentation. If in this process, we want to change destinations on the signs, if that's something we could do on the fly, instead of having to start the process all over again. He seems to be pretty open to wanting to work with us on this stuff. And I can't say that they don't really care what's on the sign more than where it's at and whether it blocks views or safety issues or anything like that. They have some requirements about what can and cannot be on there. But I'm hoping to find out from him that he would allow us to change destinations with a verbal, or not a verbal, but an email or a written description of the alteration and to give them the information they need to make sure it meets their requirements. And then we can just get that as a partial approval in the process of getting the overall approval.
But did I hear you say that those permits haven't even been applied for? And that we may be another year out?
Right. We've, we started talking to them a couple of weeks ago. And it was a process. It's something that's going to take some time whenever we started it. So we've gotten the process started, and I'm hoping that he'll be working with us on there. And hopefully, we'll be on the short end of it. But he was estimating four months would be a minimum before we start getting back to it.
Well, I just have to say that that really is unacceptable. We have talked about this ad nauseam, and we are already three years in. And I guess my, my main question is, is why is this permitting process and this step still a year away? Is there a disconnect with the state? Is there a disconnect with, within our staff? Or this is just not a priority or what? I mean, I, I just, I'm sorry. I just feel like that is really unacceptable.
John, she's not directing that at you. You've not been here long enough to know the history. But for once, I agree with her, but that's okay.
For once?
Do you have, you have, you have a pencil there?
Yes, well, I've got a pen.
Okay. I, I'm just going to deal with Sector 1 signs. I'm going to make some suggestions, and then I'm going to move on, okay? The first thing, and then I'm a historian, so this is going to sound kind of weird. As I review this thing again, there are, City of Dade was going to pay for eight signs directing folks to Purple Battlefield. All right? That's all I'm going to say about it. Sector 1 signs. 6D, I'm suggesting that we add a, I'm sorry, not, not, yeah, 6D. And you suggested adding a sign for 6E, which would be a $10,000 expense. I, I think that's worth looking into. But also on the 9B inbound from Houstonville Road, I would be in favor of taking off the sign.
Can you go back to the sign that you suggested and tell me what you wanted to put on it?
Add 6E?
Add a 6E?
Well, you said, you said if I added a 6E, it would cost $10,000. I'm saying there are two options on that. You can add the Dollhouse Museum as a fourth, one on 6D, or you can investigate 6E with Dollhouse Museum and whatever else on it. I don't see that costing $10,000. That's not my expertise. 9B inbound from Houstonville Road, it says downtown Danville, Center College, and City Hall. I'm suggesting take City Hall off and add the Dollhouse Museum. And then 12A inbound from Stanford Road, we have Pioneer Playhouse and Admiral Stadium, and I'm suggesting add the Dollhouse.
I think it really doesn't matter, because by the time we get to those, this plan is just going to be.
Well, these are all Sector 1 signs. These are the ones that are sort of either first or second-level signs in Sector 1. And that's just an assumption that we're going to start with Sector 1.
If I can point out for 12A, 12A is facing for traffic that is found on each at that point. So that would be somebody traveling away from the Dollhouse Museum already, and you tell them to turn back.
Inbound Stanford Road?
11A. That's 11A, I think.
Both of them say inbound Stanford Road.
Both of them say inbound Stanford Road. But some ways inbound Stanford Road needs to be inclusion of the Dollhouse Museum.
That's Ghost Pike?
Yeah, it's Ghost Pike.
The sign, and you tell them to turn left to Pioneer Playhouse and Admiral Stadium. So if I put the Dollhouse Museum on there, it'd be for people who are already traveling around the bypass and it missed it, I guess.
And that's from 11A and 12A? Okay, well.
That's what we're saying. It's complicated.
Sure, I understand, yeah, well.
It sways one thing.
Yeah. Someplace on inbound Stanford Road, there needs to be, I'm trying to go north, south, east, and west is what I'm trying to do. Four sightings, okay? That's all I'm trying to do, so.
It's a moot point.
Yeah, it could be moot. But we have, we have $90,000 that's already in the budget from the past two years to spend on this. So when we get to that point, we won't be, you know, I don't know. Just very minor tweak.
Excuse me. Well, I also agree with Commissioner Terry. It seems like we've been at this a long time, to be no further along than we are. But what, I guess when I was looking at this, I was just giving it sort of a general overview of sort of what we were talking about. So I haven't really got specific with it. Did you, what sort of answers did you want tonight or any? Or is this just informational? Or what, what did you have in mind, I guess?
It was requested that we provide y'all the information again. At one point, we were looking at, like the lady did earlier with the light presentation, to give you the PowerPoint presentation again, to give it to you a year and a half ago. But because of time and everything else going on, we put this together and met with Lori to find out what she needed and be able to review it from there and make a recommendation, give it to y'all for discussion tonight.
Can I, can I just say a thing to clarify what we talked about a little? What I requested was, was three signs in the south end. One of them coming from the Junction City area. And, and we would, then people would, would, would come around and then go off toward the museum at Maple. And one of the, one of the points that I made in looking at these that doesn't cost extra money or clutter is that on some of these intersections, the one coming out of Paraville, for instance, and the other ones as well, when you're a little further out, you see the green signs from the state that say Danville this way. So you've, you've passed that in your car. And then you get to the huge monument signs, and there's one of these at each entrance to the city. And they're, I don't know, what are they, 10 feet, 12 feet, 15? The, the big stone ones that say Sister, Sister City, excuse me, Carrick Fergus, all that. Welcome to Danville. Well, at those intersections, they also say downtown Danville this way. But you're seeing this huge sign that says you've just come into downtown Danville. So my suggestion was, are those areas where we could say Dollhouse Museum, since Danville has been pointed out twice to that driver in, in those different, different directions. And then the other thing about pointing people into Danville is if you came from any of those directions, whether it was Paraville, Junction City, Stanford, and you made your way into downtown Danville, and you went to the courthouse or the city hall or the hub or wherever you were going, the hospital, you would never have passed any kind of sign that said Dollhouse Museum. So you could turn around and go back where you came from and never, no matter how much you went around Danville, because we're kind of hidden tucked away on the far side there. And, and there aren't any signs in the downtown area or, or on the plan for the downtown area that say anything like Dollhouse Museum, you know, keep going. It's, it's a little further. But we, we are a significant attraction in this town. We're one of the only things that's open all day, every day, all year long. And, and I know you've had letters from a lot of the restaurants saying that we do promote them and send a lot of business their way. So it, it feels like I would really like the support of the city to get, get some visibility there.
I've got to admit, I apologize to Lori, but I really didn't explain that the thrust, the, the goal of the sign is the way she wanted, was to bring the northbound traffic, people coming to her place. So that instead of going through town or cutting up earlier, they would go ahead and take the bypass all the way around and then come up to Maple and come back down with the existing sign that's in the plan and calls for that direction. There, there isn't one now. So the sign we're recommending goes along with that idea. We just don't have the other signs back at the other previous intersections and all. I was, we were joking about it to one point, that it's like, me as a traffic engineer, if I was just going to do this on my own and say where I would want to have northbound traffic cut back to her place, I'd bring them up Houstonville or bring them up Lebanon Road. And Jennifer here might want to bring them in Stanford, because that way she, you bring it to tourists all the way through all the downtown and all the tourist attractions. But then, you know, me as a traffic engineer would say, well, you don't want to bring them through traffic tie-ups if they want to go straight to it. So Lori's idea makes people around it and straight to it. So it's literally, it's fashion.
Well, yeah, and.
What do y'all want with it, so?
But with my idea, extra signs didn't need to be installed once you got off the bypass. They're already in place, so.
There was one thing that if we brought somebody in Perryville, okay, coming straight in through Perryville Center, Dollhouse Museum, I think you called for it to turn left. But if somebody started coming in that way, and we're looking for the Dollhouse Museum because their GPS doesn't come that way, when they get to Maple on Main Street, we don't have a small sign to point people up Maple to cut back on, on your street. So we would need to add that to catch people that are coming in that direction. So that's, what I was saying was that she, she just requested what would be, she wanted to change, like the four, the signs with four destinations, she wanted to change.
Pay attention.
The signs with four destinations, she wanted to change to take a destination off and add one if we can get a one with four sign, four destinations on a sign. Or if we have to get another one, then it would cost additional for the sign to get her destination. So, you know, if that's what y'all want us to do, we can do that. It's more money. It's just adding costs.
John, I, John, I trust you because of the way you've reported this to us to keep on working on this in an equitable way. Because we say, I, I, let me use somebody else. There's, there's another place on there that's very specific, and it's on there six or seven times. And it's on the outskirts of town. So we can't say we're going to be specific, I mean, be general on the outside. But yet, right next to me saying that, there's a very specific location identified. So bring about some balance is all I want. And there's only about four or five major venues that were highlighted in this whole plan. So I, I don't understand what the, why it's so complex to get a balance. And, and go from, you go from eight to six to four to two to just one. The schools, for example.
Well, and part of.
The stilleries, for example. I'm going to get myself in trouble for this all over.
Yeah, I think, I think the high schools, Danville's mentioned twice, Boyle County's mentioned twice. The Dollhouse is in there eight times. I'm trying to remember. I went back and checked a few things. I thought it was interesting that, that some things are there a lot, like City of Danville is there a lot. But that's the idea of the wayfinding on the outer loop that appears the most is to get people downtown in that direction. So that is to be expected. And like I said at the beginning, picking and choosing what individual destinations get on there, it's a fashion thing.
Yeah. Well, and that's why to me Sector 1 is so important. Because that's the outer limits, to announce to somebody who's going around the town that these things do exist inside the town. And that's where I found the shortages.
But let's say the wayfinding is, the idea of the wayfinding is to get people who are traveling to general areas. And then, once you get into those general areas, then you put the specific destination signs up. And so the, the issue here is you're putting a specific destination on the outer loop where you're trying to get the general direction signs. Now, there, I mean, there's, there's, and the rules and stuff are the guidelines. There are times that you do, like, like we do on Maple and the 127, because that is a decision point for somebody to make to get into the detailed area. So that one works real good there. And then to put the signs up at the other locations, it basically helps people make the movement that Lori wants them to make to come in the way she wants them to come in. But it's going to, it's going to require more cost. Because a lot of the other things that are on there, like the City of Danville, those. the other things that are on there, like the city of Danville, those there are pretty much more that, that follows the idea of the wayfinding guidelines, so if you start taking those off, you're, you're trading, you're making a trade, and that's the idea too, we're making a recommendation to you, if you want to make those trade-offs, that's, that's up to y'all, and we'll-
John, if I may say one thing about the, the business of putting very general signs in the larger areas and then going toward the specific signs, that is highly contested by people who do destination development, Roger Brooks is one of them, he, he was the keynote speaker at the recent Kentucky League of Cities, uh, presentation that, that some of you went to, and he's, he's kind of one of the big guns, and what he says is, always put your specifics, whatever you're gonna sell, put it out there where people see it, put it out on the bypass, uh, there's another guy named John Gann, who, who I wrote to, to ask about this, and he said the same thing, um, that you're, that whatever is unique in your city, that they can't get at home, put it out there where they see it on entering, and that's about placemaking, that's, that's about selling your city, uh, what, what John Gann said was, uh, putting signs that say downtown on the outskirts is not terribly effective, because you're telling people where it is, but not why they should go there, and people tend not to go, they, you know, they use the bypass, that's why it's called a bypass, because they kind of bypass the, the town, if there's nothing unusual or, or special or particular in the town, so for, for destination development and for, um, for placemaking, some of these things need, need to be announced to people, and that's the purpose and the goal of putting the Dollhouse Museum, there are only six Dollhouse museums in the nation, so that's an example of something that, um, is very unusual here, that, that you can't see somewhere else, and that people, uh, might be responsive, then, of course, they get bounced from us, uh, and, and before you were here, there were a lot of people, restaurateurs that came, uh, to talk or wrote to the commissioners to say, we get more recommendations, I think Gina Milton was one of them, Milton's Deli, we get more referrals from the Dollhouse Museum for tables than anyplace else except Center College, um, the Bluegrass Pizza Pub, Tuts, same thing, letters about people they're getting from us, so, so the specificity around the town really is critical.
Let me, uh-
If I may make one more statement, part of my frustration is, I thought you were coming here tonight for us to make these decisions, and maybe that was my mistake in thinking that, but I thought we were a lot farther along in this process, so, and, and I think, um, other people thought that too, so there's really no point in discussing this anymore, because we have a plan, and I just want to know when we are ready to actually make this decision.
I was gonna make the recommendation, that we discussed it quite a bit here, we can stop and revisit the things we discussed, we can go back and, and, whatever direction you want to give us, or if y'all want to take some more time to look at it, we can pick it back up at your next meeting.
May I offer a suggestion to facilitate the conversation? Just one correction, just so you know, the report dated before you, and the master plan is dated August twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen, the process, I understand, has been much longer than that, but it's not a three-year-old report, so the process may be going on, the other thing I want to, it's evident, you know, that this conversation and issue is complicated and complex, for which you hired an independent third-party contractor to navigate the process, during said process, there was multiple meetings, community forums for all interested parties to participate, I would caution you upon receipt of a professional independent third-party study, to make amendments or take meetings outside of public forums for amendments, with all due respect to Ms. Kagan Moore, um, on, on the process, I think it's inappropriate for staff to meet individually with concerned business owners or interest in the city outside of the public forum in conjunction with the city's third-party contractor, who made reports upon receipt of community input for anyone who came in attendance, for which I'm, I'm certain Ms. Kagan Moore was present, as were individuals from any other interested business or interest within the city or county, I'm a process-oriented individual, you know that, and I, I gear you towards fairness of process, and I'm just saying, for all of the effort that has been made for particular signs or names on the signs, there could be counter, um, points made by other potential business owners or attractions within the community that did not have advanced notice of your decision-making tonight, which I would caution you against, you have a plan before you, your decision in direction to staff needs to be, should the permits be applied for in conjunction with the plan, we know that that's a, now, a, a four to twelve-month process, but nothing happens in that process until the application is made for them and it is received, until you're talking, until that's received, you're talking about decorating the cake that you don't even have the ingredients for.
Yes, I would like to know when, when everything is ready for us to say, this is how much money we're gonna spend, this is how many signs we're going to put up, and this is what is going to be on them.
And I think that cannot be made, because prices will vary upon when those bids are sought, so I think the motion that would be appropriate tonight, should you choose to make it, would be to direct the permits to be applied for in conjunction with the presented plan as recommended by staff, if so, I think that's the direction that Mr. Castle needs to proceed with the permitting.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Sounds like it, I, I agree with you, we thought this was already moving forward, so, um, we need to get it, and, uh, we all know that, uh, once that gets going, we use the frosting on the cake or decorating the cake, in the interim, some of these places, and I, it's very doubtful, may no longer be in existence, so I think there is a time to look at the signs and change them, but I think we gotta get the process going, so, I'll make that motion, to direct staff to get things going in Frankfurt, so we can start planting poles and putting signs up.
And I will second that, because-
Motion's made and seconded.
I was, uh, I suppose I was under the impression, and, and maybe I just did not compute this at all, was that when this plan was made, we were, we were moving forward to implement it, and here we are, this report may only be a little over a year old, but we've been talking about this for, I know, at least three years, so I, I guess I was under the impression that we were ready to move forward, and that we were deciding how we were gonna spend our money, that's all I have to say.
So if I look at this one sitting, the staff recommendation of adding one sign, that would be one D, would cost an estimated five thousand dollars to the project costs, museum recommendations require adding five signs, one D, six E, seven D, ten D, and ten E, and that would be an estimated additional forty-five thousand dollars to the project costs.
But we don't even have the permits for any signs.
I understand, and, and your recommendation, and your second, is to move forward on what has been presented by?
It was to move forward to get the permits, and-
Was that what we did?
As recommended by staff in conjunction with the plan.
Right.
Yeah, as you suggested, we've spent money on Carm and Associates, this thing needs to be moving.
To help you a little bit there-
The details are later, yes.
Well, but I, but I think there's, there's some major confusion right now.
Yeah, there is.
We've been waiting on this, because we were told that we were, had to, if there was, if the commission was gonna make any modifications to it, those modifications had to be presented and had to be approved before it could be taken forward by staff. Now, tonight, we're hearing that we can go ahead and get the easements and the locations of the signs done before we put the content necessarily on the signs, now, if that's where we are, then I'm in favor of the motion, but that's, tonight's the first time we've heard that, and is that what we're saying, John?
Y'all got me so confused.
I think, I think the answer to that question is yes.
Yes, I think that answer is yes.
In my situation, I was presented this plan-
Yes, sir.
And told, go get encroachment permits, when we get the permits, we start building them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that we would be buying the signs and putting them in, I was under the impression y'all have already approved it, now, if y'all are wanting to tweak what goes on the signs, right now, I'm in the process of finding out how easy that can be done, if it's easy, then I'm still working on the direction y'all already presented there, what, a year ago when y'all first got this.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So, my recommendation is, let me do my work, let Earl do his work, and we'll talk to the state, and we'll get back to you guys with this thing that's a hanging point, that if they give us the leeway to change the destinations, the exact wording on each sign, with just a little bit of effort without holding things up, then it won't be holding things up, right now, I'm spending time, coming with presentations and spending extra time to get information back to you guys, that I could be doing other things and making progress.
Like I said, it's-
We have a motion and a second.
I'll call for the question.
Okay.
Question's been called.
Yeah, well, I was gonna withdraw my motion, if he's working on it, that's the whole sticking point, is we already thought we were at a point where we could look at the content of the sign, but it sounds like they need direction to move forward on easements, and that's what's kind of bothering me, but if you're working on that, then there's no reason for me to make that motion.
I've already been directed to work on the easements, I'm doing that, the only thing we're working on right now that's, I think is the question, it sounds like, is that y'all are wanting to possibly change some of the destinations on there, let me find out if I can do that without much effort with the state, and if it's not a problem, we can proceed from there, as I'm working on the encroachment permit, then if we want to discuss further what goes on each individual sign, we've got time to do that, but in the meantime, I can be working on the encroachment permit.
We never heard that before.
We need those regardless of what we do in the future.
No, excuse me, nonetheless, there's a recommendation for one additional signage, staff has no authority to ask for a encroachment permit outside of the plan that you've approved, so if you want the additional sign, hence the need for a motion. If you don't want the additional sign, don't make the motion.
The additional sign would be how much of an expenditure?
We were asking five grand for the one sign, because it'll be a smaller one, not the big ones that are typically out on the bypass.
Let's do it, make it.
I'll make a motion to approve that additional sign at five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion?
Well, I, I think the, the five thousand dollars additional sign is only if you can't put the third, I mean, put the fourth location on the sign, right?
No, if that particular one, the Dollhouse will be the only destination on that sign, it's gonna be on the northbound lanes, as Maple pulls off of the bypass to go back down into town, I'd be directing people down Maple to come back out, Lexington Avenue to the Dollhouse, that, that will be one sign that gives northbound traffic direction to the Dollhouse, actually, if I can get the leeway to make changes and stuff, and y'all can discuss this further later on, I don't even need this, I can just go with the original plan, and talk to them about that, if I find out that we can make changes without too much effort, let me find that out, I can hopefully find that out in the next two weeks.
So do we still leave the motion in, Steve?
Not if you're not approving an additional sign, if you're not approving additional sign, staff has previous direction to proceed with the encroachment permits, which sounds like it's on pace to be completed soon.
So the motion is for adding the additional sign?
What's that?
The motion is for adding the additional sign.
Right.
He withdrew it.
No, Kevin didn't, Kevin made that motion.
Kevin made the motion.
You second it?
I did.
We're discussing, so, yeah.
So we're adding an additional sign, and he needs us to do that in order to be forward.
There's been a motion to do that.
And a second.
And a second.
Yes.
Now, can I call for the question or the motion?
Question's been called, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries.
Let's do that all over again, you want to, let's just start, take it from the top.
Item fifteen is a resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash twelve dash oh nine dash oh two, this is the QK four contract amendment, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, we're working on the signal, at the traffic signal to replace the wooden poles at Fourth Street, um, getting started with that, we're trying to get the paperwork caught up with the, the effort of, of, in the field, and this amendment authorizes QK four to, to perform the traffic work that is necessary to get approval from the cabinet.
This will be, this will remove the wooden poles?
This is, yes, this is their service agreement that allows them to do the engineering, uh, they've already started the surveying.
Chair, chair will entertain a motion.
I will move for approval of resolution two zero one nine twelve zero nine zero two.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, um, we are in discussion, Mr. Hung?
Can I ask a question for y'all? It's, uh, it's, uh- Did y'all pass a motion to spend five thousand dollars of taxpayer's money to put up one sign?
Yes, yes.
That's not right.
Yes.
You're spending my money to put up a sign for one individual.
Yes.
I don't have nothing about putting up a sign for that individual or anything, but I, I do have a problem with y'all spending my taxpayer's money, you know, to put up one sign for one place.
So, do we, do we have a motion and a second on resolution?
We do.
I believe we do, discussion?
Is this going to somewhat match the others, or do we have any idea what this is gonna look like?
It's the new poles that match your new streetlight sections down here on the Fourth Street, or the fifth or fourth end, so we're migrating that pattern as we go through town every opportunity we get.
Okay.
Any further discussion, questions, senior unchair?
Yeah, this is the engineering work, right, is not the materials?
No, that's correct, we're trying to get the paperwork caught up with the engineering work at this point, they, they, they started their background research back when we first had the conversation, and so we're just now getting an agenda where we can get their agreement on, on the agenda in front of you.
So just for, uh, uh, community's knowledge, there's about seven different things the engineers have to do, including working with the state, because when I first looked at it, it seemed awfully, awfully expensive, but there's a lot of things they gotta cover right here, and I don't know if you want to kind of go over that a little bit or not.
I, I'd be happy to, it's your leisure, but in the end, they have to do quite a bit of background research, they have to develop a concept plan, they have to do the field surveying, they have to, to submit the plans essentially complete to the transportation cabinet, transportation cabinet provides feedback and direction on those plans, and they have to actually amend those plans before they are considered final, and then, then of course, they have to go through the shop drawing process for the actual mast arms, they have to be, uh, certain structural components to it, so they're, they're not an inexpensive item, they'll run about fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars per pole, and, um, and so items like that now that are in right-of-way, including signs, are more expensive than you would typically expect, because of the engineering tied to the structure itself, things have to be breakaway, and while maintaining the wind load restrict, uh, resistance, and, and so it's, things like that are more complicated than, than you would think, so yes, this contract is twenty-two thousand dollars and change, but there is quite a bit of work that goes into it.
Any further discussion? Senior unchair, call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries, I believe that concludes our, uh, agenda of business tonight, uh, my understanding is, we have a need for an executive session?
Yes, covering property acquisition, litigation, and personnel.
Well, trifecta. Move that we go into, uh, executive session, to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS sixty-one eight ten one F, um, also for litigation purposes, for which disclosure of details might compromise litigation posture pursuant to KRS sixty-one eight ten one C, and, um, for property acquisition, for which publicly disclosing, what's it say, I'm sorry, for which publicly at present- what's it say, I'm sorry, for which publicly at present stage might or would likely affect the value per KRS 61181B.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, we are in executive session. Motion, that we move back into regular session?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of moving back into regular session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, we are in regular session.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn, do we hear a second?
Yep, there we go.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Have a good evening.